Orders to rise for pledge and play. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is approve the agenda at one addition under old business number two. Add B grant update.
If there are no more additions, I'd like to approve the agenda.
Support.
Move and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approve of the minutes for the November 14th meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 14th, 2017 meeting.
Support.
Move and supported to approve the minutes for the November 14th meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is financial report.
We began the month of November with $67,137.40. We took in $80,017.45. And we made disbursements in the amount of $29,640.47. Leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $117,514.38.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Move and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, correspondence. Item A, Richmond Lennox EMS is going to have a Red Cross blood drive on January 2nd from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And it's going to be held at the Richmond Township offices on the corner of M-19 and School Section. So hopefully some of you will want to go and give some blood. It's a very worthwhile endeavor. And it is a new location. It's at the Richmond Township offices this year. So just like to bring that to your attention. Moving on, item B. This is just informational. Our state representative Pamela Hornberger is going to be in our township January 8th from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning. So if anyone would like to come in and speak with her about concerns or whatever, you're more than welcome to do so. We haven't seen much ever since she was elected, but I'm sure she's a very busy lady. And there's a lot of legislation in Lansing. So if you're familiar with any of the legislation that hasn't been acted on yet, you can certainly come in and give her your opinion.
Their previous state rep never came to the hall?
Andrea didn't, but the previous ones had.
Yeah.
What day is that?
That is on Monday, the day before the board. So she's going to be hitting all the townships. I don't know how many. I know at least three that morning. So if you get to meet your state representative and say hello. Okay, moving on. Item C, Smart 911. We touched base on this last month. I got a little more information for you here. It seems like a very worthwhile thing, especially if you have a need. And this is where you can register with Central Dispatch. If you have someone in your home that has severe medical problems or any other type of problem, that would be beneficial to the Central Dispatch if they get a call. So if someone calls an ambulance to your home and they punch it up and that information is on there, they'll know what they're looking for before they get there. They're on line, you can register online. It's pretty simple. We're going to put an article about this in our newsletter in January. And if you have the need, you can do it. If you don't have a need also. But especially if you have someone in your home that may need specific medical attention, it'd be a worthwhile thing. Okay, moving on. Old business. Item A, Neighborhood Watch. I've got a handout for you. Wayne Bumgarden, who's our Neighborhood Watch person, is here tonight. There's a meeting tomorrow night. Is it 7:00? Right, Wayne? Pass that down, please. Wayne's been mulling over the idea of Neighborhood Watch signs at intersections. We had them about 40 years ago. He just kind of drew this up as a thought. I did contact the road commission today. And unfortunately, they don't have any type of cost sharing type thing. But they did have a couple ideas. And I'm going to have to follow up with the person in charge of the road commission sign If the board wants, we'll continue looking into it. And we'll get back to you with a number of signs, location, and a cost estimate. Gets a little tricky with the location of the sign because they told me today at the road commission, if you're going right away, you've got to be seven feet off the ground.
Seven feet off the ground or on the road?
No, off the ground. So my brainstorm for the day was, how about the backside of a stop sign? So when you're pulling down the gravel road, off the paved road, there's always a stop sign. The sign would be showing out. And they didn't think that was a bad idea, but I said, can we put them on? And he said, no, but they could put them on. So I'm going to explore that a little more, see if it's a good idea or a bad idea. So if you want, Wayne can address everybody right now. We can get some more information for next month on this.
I just wanted your input on what you thought about it. Was it a good idea or just forget about it or whatever? I mean, it's, you know, I got all the intersections listed there, but they don't necessarily have to be on, you know, every one of them.
Yeah.
But that's just something to think about, you know? And I got some prices down below. I just kind of looked them up on eBay and on Amazon, you know? The only one I could find that we have left is over across from Eric Reeve there in the corner of Division and Meldrum. There's one there, but it's so old and bleached out, you can't even hardly tell it's a sign anymore. But that's, you know, one of them, the original ones. So.
How long ago was that?
What?
How long ago was that?
Probably the 60s or 70s.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Just after Columbus come over, I think. I don't know.
I know. I know Wayne asked the sheriff, and naturally the sheriff said it won't hurt. I'm a little skeptical on how much it helps. I mean, it looks good, but I don't believe it's going to deter one person from doing what they would have done anyway. So, but we can get you the information on it and then you can make a decision. If that's all right. Okay, moving on. Grant update. Last week, I believe it was Wednesday, we were informed that our acquisition grant had been approved by the Michigan National Resource Trust Fund for a full amount of $148,000. It's not a done deal until the legislature and governor sign the money for it, which usually takes place around April. So even though they approved our grant, you don't get money till the state gives you the I talked with Chris Bunch at Six Rivers and he was going to, the thing I had on the table, he was going to send that out to the Voice and the Times Herald as a news release. And maybe they'll get that in there. Realistically, we're probably looking at probably July to close on the property and get it all wrapped up. So that went as well as could be expected. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, no, this is good. This is great.
Okay. There's no questions on that? We'll move on to new business. Item A, are the meeting dates for 2018?
How are they?
Very good.
You switched them around, didn't you?
No, I didn't touch it.
There you go.
Okay, it's pretty standard. It's the second Tuesday of each month, except for May. We took the precaution of moving it to the first Tuesday because if some entity would call for an election, that would be the second Tuesday. So those are the dates that it came out to be. So we need a motion, some effective votes.
I make a motion to accept the 2018 Casco Township Board Trustees Meeting. Should I list them all?
You might as well.
Okay, January 9th, February 13th, March 13th, April 10th, May 1st, June 12th, July 10th, August 14th, September 11th, October 9th, November 13th, December 11th. All meetings start at 7:00 PM here at Casco Township Hall. Is it 4512 Meldrum Road? Casco's Michigan, 40064.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported. I'm not going to repeat it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next item is B. We have a couple appointments to make this year. The terms have run out. They're both on the ZBA. They're both three-year terms. We have Dale Eldren as a regular member and Al Enson as an alternate.
Dale enjoys it though? Okay, and how is Eldren? Is he?
Yeah, he's got a couple health problems, but I talked to him and he's doing okay.
Okay, yeah, I keep him whenever.
He's been there. He seems interesting.
Good, because I always encourage when I see him. I mean, I said, we need, consider it like an apprenticeship. It's going to take you a while to learn it, but.
I'll move that we appoint Dale Eldren as a regular ZBA member for the full term and Al Enson as an alternate.
I'll support that. Moved and supported. Appoint Dale Eldren as a regular member and Al Enson as an alternate for three-year terms to the ZBA. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstaining. One abstention. Okay, moving on. Summer tax collection. No, on this one. No, I didn't. Summer tax collection.
Summer tax collection will take place starting the 1st of July. And we will be collecting 100% of the millages required in Richmond, East China, and 50% of Anchor Bay, and also Macomb County Intermediate and RISA in the summertime.
No, the other 50% of Anchor Bay is done in the winter, then?
That's right.
Is it 50% of the RISA and MISD?
No.
They're all 100%.
Everybody else is separated. Anchor Bay's millage, which is split in two.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item, D, Park Property Tax Bill. Now that we rent farmland, we have to pay taxes on that. The winter tax bill for that property that is rented is $619.20.
And the bill was paid on Monday, so I have a paid receipt in my records.
Okay, I make a motion to, you know, to pay the winter tax bill for the Casco Township property, the amount of $619.20.
Support.
Move and supported to pay the tax bill on the park property. Any discussion? However, roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, item E, Resolution 2017-13, waiving penalties on a property transfer. Apparently there's a law that says if somebody files their transfer late, a penalty of $5 per day will be levied. It doesn't happen often, and when it does, it's not a big deal. And besides not generating hardly any money, it's sure going to make new property owners in the township very unhappy. And the assessor recommended that we do this resolution.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2017-13, waiving penalties on property transfer. I think it's.
No, 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 support that. Move and supported to adopt Resolution 2017-13. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Danny?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, item F, Resolution 2017-14, Poverty Exemption Policy and Guidelines. This also comes from the assessor. This needs to be done if we process any hardship applications. And so we laid it out in this guideline, and she thought that was excellent. So here it is on the table.
The bar seems awfully high. In other words, if you have assets of twice what your tax bill is, if I don't, if I understand this correctly, you cannot qualify?
There's a lot of limits, you know, the.
I mean, if you have an $1,800 tax bill and have assets of $3,600, there's no exemption.
But your home isn't considered your asset. It's liquid asset.
I understand, liquid assets.
Right.
$3,600 in the bank and that's it, basically.
I know, but you have to make.
Very high bar.
You have to make, according to the 2017 guidelines, you have to make less than $11,880 to even be eligible.
Do we have any?
Yeah, we have usually a couple every year.
Qualify, really?
Yep. So that's the way it is.
We also have exemptions for disabled military, things like that. Not many in the township, but it's available. And.
I just feel a little more nervous.
Well, I was too.
Feeling maybe I'm ahead of you.
And we also have deferments where anybody age 62 and over can apply for a deferment, which means that you would not have to pay your summer taxes until the February date with no penalty or late fee.
The board review, in the past, if there was extenuating circumstances, they could still give a discount in your taxes even if you didn't necessarily meet exactly the guidelines. So they're not limited per se, but you have to have extenuating circumstances. Otherwise, you come in and you're saying, I made $12,000, but my prescription cost for the year is $14,000. You know, they're probably going to help you out.
Good to hear.
So.
For the disabled military, what percent is they?
100%.
100%. Okay.
The VA issues a letter to that effect, and they bring it in and we show it to the assessor.
Okay, so we need action on the resolution, please.
I'll make a motion that Resolution 2017-14, Resolution to Establish Poverty Exemption Policy and Guidelines is adopted.
Awesome.
Vote, Kevin.
I'll support that.
Move and supported to adopt Resolution 2017-14 to Establish Poverty Exemption Policy and Guidelines. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is G, to go hand in hand with the last resolution. This is the actual application. Our assessor felt that, you know, it needed to be approved so that that would be the only document that could be used this time without board action. And I didn't see a problem doing that, so it's on the agenda.
What did we have before?
They had another one, but I don't know. To tell you the truth, I don't think in other years the board approved the application. So I don't know, maybe she got some direction from the state tax commission or something. But she said she needs it, and that's good enough for me.
Yeah, me too. I make a motion to approve the hardship exemption application for Casco Township. St. Clair County.
Okay, move and supported to approve the hardship exemption application. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, item H, Giffords Webster. Since the planner who we've had for 30 years merged with Giffords Webster last year. Any agreements and stuff we had were all in the name of clear zoning or virtue of oil or something. So they wanted a new agreement with Giffords Webster's name on it. This one is for the website retainer. I mentioned in the update, Giffords actually set up our website, and they also maintain it. They charge us $500 a year for maintenance. From what I've talked of the townships, that seems to be the going rate. So I think that's good. They're also going to have a fee on there to put all the information we want on their website rather than have us do it. And at this point in time, it seems that would be the most beneficial. Anytime we want to change that portion of the agreement, we can do it with a 30-day notice.
Does this fee, sometime we want to update it? I mean, change it, this fee will?
Well, we put agendas on it. We put minutes on it. We put announcements on it.
Right.
I'm a little bit weary about viruses and stuff, trying to do it from here, and they do a good job.
Okay.
Because if we do it, screw it up, and it's going to cost us more to fix it than it would have been in the first place.
We could, does our website have link to the St. Clair County?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the fee for that is $200 a month, up to 42 hours a year of their time.
Is it customary for us to indemnify them? The liability clause seems to indemnify them for about anything and everything else.
Well, they're just putting out what you tell them to put out.
I understand, but what if they make an error? And what if the error is extremely costly? What if we have a security issue?
I read the whole thing when I got it about a month ago.
I'm just concerned about whether this is customary or whether it may be a little indemnifying them in this total manner is wise.
I don't know. I can let it pass the attorney if you want.
I wish you would.
I don't understand. They've been doing it for the last year.
I know, but this is a website, and these issues have been very prominent in the news lately about hacking and.
And what can they do to our website? There's nothing on our website that they can.
Or false information, or misinformation, or somebody using the website to an end that isn't correct and not being seen. I mean, I don't have a whole lot of train fashion examples, but I just think it might be good to review that we indemnify them almost totally for everything they do and publish on our behalf. I'm not sure that, is that customary or is that wise? Or is that what your attorney might say?
The good thing is, is when we give them something to put on, they're so good about it that by day's end.
It's on.
We just have to review it.
Suppose they make an error that has some cost or causes somebody terrific grief or worse.
Then I'm sure they're insured for that.
Well, I'm not, from what it says here, that's not clear to me. That's my question.
I don't know if immunity covers that or not. That would be the question. We didn't have a website agreement previously. We just had the board approve paying the $500. Now we have an agreement. If you're uncomfortable with it, you can.
I just want to, I want some reassurance that this is customary and, you know, probably will work for us. The other, there's some similar clauses in the agreement for services that they provide.
Yeah, I went over that kind of paragraph by paragraph.
But we pay for, if there's a lawsuit for taking them out of the lawsuit, apparently some of the fees.
The planning is a little different to the website.
I understand, but I'm concerned about both of those clauses.
Because they basically, in the planning phase, what they do is they review stuff and tell you how it pertains to the organs.
I mean, I'm aware they've done a very good job for us for a very long time. But you know, things happen.
What paragraphs are you referring to, so I can put it in there?
There's a liability clause.
There's a liability on the first one.
Yes. It's paragraph seven, or item seven, liability.
Trying to remember, because I know it, the wording has changed, but it's pretty much paragraph by paragraph, but the old one on the planning part, if it makes you more comfortable.
Well, it's a heightened concern about all the internet issues right now because of Equifax and.
Well, it really wouldn't affect the planning portion because they're not submitting anything for public view. They send it to the applicant or the township. But I can check it out. Or if the board doesn't want to muck it, they can make a motion. It's up to you.
So we're not going to?
We'll just.
We're going to table this?
Yep, table until we get a legal review like this.
Okay, all right.
Do you need a motion for that?
If it makes you happy.
Yes.
I move that we table this agreement until we get a legal review, particularly of the liability provisions.
Both agreements or what?
On both agreements.
Okay, moved and supported to table the two service agreements until we get a legal review.
You're tying them both into the same motion.
Both of them?
I'm going to need a motion, a separate motion for the other one.
Yeah, you can't tie them both together.
They're two separate agenda items. We can't tie them together. But we'll just have to duplicate the language.
No big deal, so we're under.
Item seven specifically in the website agreement, right, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And Joe, you?
Yeah, I support.
You supported it, okay.
Okay, so we're all set with that?
Yep.
Okay, moved and supported.
I move that we table the agreement for professional services for Giffords and Webster.
Well, we got a vote on this one.
We got a vote on this one.
Get to the vote, get in. Relax. I just asked for your discussion.
Gotcha.
Okay, a call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Oh, this was supposed to be roll call.
No, because we're not voting on the resolution. There's voting on the table. All those opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
Aye.
Vote, no. What?
She votes, no.
Okay, so we have four ayes, one no. Okay, and then.
For the second?
Second one.
I move that we table the agreement for professional services for Giffords and Webster, pending attorney's review particularly of the indemnification provisions for the company or services they provide.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Abstaining, motion carries.
I come from a place where I struck a number of these kinds of provisions from agreements with companies that I dealt with when I worked for the university. So it's not a, out of the blue issue.
Well, we'll appreciate it. It's a phone.
I just, this company, we've dealt with her how long, and now we're. I just, this company, we've dealt with her how long, and now we're, it's changing.
I'm sure we'll prove these.
And I do too, but I'm.
I suspect the attorney will say that's fine, but you never know. We have some determinants. They may say some things you don't want to indemnify them for. You want them to carry the policy, to protect themselves for. Rather than us doing that for them.
They're still doing the work for us.
Yeah. I mean, we have insurance also, but.
Well, can't be too careful these days.
The old planning service agreement's still in force, so that's not a problem. The other one, I'll have to call and work it out with Rod. So.
And you haven't been paying them monthly in this, in this way, prior to this, have you?
For the website?
Yeah.
No.
No, not in that sense as well.
Dan wants a legal.
But you're calling our lawyer, right, on both of these?
Yeah, we're gonna send it to him. He may have to.
But they do it immediately, and it's checked. Yeah, it's checked immediately.
Okay, so it'll be January till we deal with that. Moving on. Item J, Employee Conversation. We have two hourly folks that work in the office here. And Brenda Loper and Linda Thien. And they currently both make $17 an hour. They've been here for, I don't know, eight to ten years or more. And my recommendation to you is that, starting January one, we give them $0.25 an hour, seventeen twenty-five, which is a percent and a half. So I won, we go from seventeen twenty-five to seventeen fifty, which is another percent and a half.
Do you speak on behalf of them, or these two individuals provide this service?
They do a good job. We're lucky we have one.
At all.
So that's my recommendation to the board.
I, I make a motion, motion to, was it $0.25 an hour raised?
January one and July one.
January first and July first, 2018.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Colleen? Bill?
Aye.
And Col. Yes.
Okay, next item is payment of the bills.
If there are no questions on the bills, I make a motion that they be paid.
All those support. Moved and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And you?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item is citizens' comments. Anybody who'd like to have questions or comments to the board? We request that you give us your name for the minutes, but if you don't want it, you don't have to. Here you go.
Sir, do you wanna?
No.
No.
Okay. No, he wants to fix his house. Okay, nothing from the audience? Anything from the board? I guess I just a couple things. The two employees we just gave a raise to, that's the largest raise they've had in the last five years, money-wise.
Oh, you did it last year.
No, last year you got $0.25 and a vacation day.
Oh, okay.
So money-wise, it's the largest raise I believe we had in five years. And they're, they're very excellent employees. And they would be very, very hard to replace.
Yes.
So we'd like to thank them. And I guess the only other thing I got is Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And we'll adjournments since someone wants to speak.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.